All right, thank you everybody for coming this morning. I have a call order, we do that in court. Any public comment before this study?
Yes, I do, I can speak. I wanted to address some of the comments made during the previous commissioners' court and made outside of court. First, Commissioner Stewart, you made the statement you were not for rewarding bad behavior. You insinuated those of us that don't have office hours of eight to five are displaying bad behavior. That was your foundation along with the majority of the court for deciding to give some employees a larger raise than others. My office hours are seven forty-five to four Monday through Thursday and seven forty-five to three on Friday, which results in a forty-hour work week. I chose these hours because after dealing with customers in my office for almost sixteen years, this is the most popular choice of operational hours. I will also remind you that as an elected official, I have the right to choose my office hours. The court discussed adding time clocks. And during this discussion, you Commissioner Stewart made the statement that would fix the office hours employees being paid for a forty-hour work week. My assistant Georgie has always worked a forty-plus work week unless she was on vacation, sick, or absent due to office closures. In fact, that was another reason for creating the office hours I currently have. She had eighty-eight hours comp time in just a six-month period that she didn't use and wasn't monetarily rewarded for. She has such an outstanding work ethic that in her fifteen years as a county employee, she has never used all her PTO or vacation and never abused the forty-hour work week. Yet you want to compensate her with less of a raise than another employee. Commissioner Stewart and Commissioner Martin questioned another elected official why Georgie would need to be at work before eight since Dexter didn't even open until eight. Well, we don't just walk into our office, sit down at the RTS workstation, and wait on a customer. There are reports from the state that were run during the night hours along with reports from certified payments that must be processed. We have the task of setting up the cash store after completing the closeout from the previous day. There are emails from Texas DMV that require our attention that need to be read preferably before we conduct our first transaction in the RTS system. Besides all this I've just mentioned, we have to clean and maintain our own office. Since COVID-19, we take extra precautions with extra sanitation. We prefer to not be cleaning or running a vacuum cleaner when a customer comes in if we can avoid it. To touch on the comment Commissioner Martin made comparing the employees within the courthouse to the jailers and needing training and certifications, I want to correct your statement and inform you that Georgie, Chad, Monique, and Justin are all required to complete trainings and certification. Assistants in all offices may have to do the same for all I know. In fact, Georgie has spent the last two months completing state-required training just so that she will be able to continue serving the customers through our RTS computers. I will conclude this topic with if you ever are unsure or curious what duties my assistant Georgie performs in my office, please come and ask and I'll be glad to enlighten you. I'm going to return to the bad behavior comment and ask a question. If my office displays such bad behavior, why is it that we have people who have bought homes here for their future retirement tell us they're going to go ahead and change their residency to Fisher County because they're so pleased with how we treat them? Are this due to my office's bad behavior that a businessman has established his company in Fisher County so that he might conduct his vehicle transactions with us? Which by the way, has generated revenue of eighteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars in this year alone. My office has taken in almost two hundred and twelve thousand dollars since October first, two thousand and nineteen, with over two hundred and three thousand being allotted to each commissioner's budget and the year isn't over yet. We strive to serve and accommodate the Fisher County residents and pride ourselves on the work we do and revenue we are able to contribute to our county budget. Lastly, I was informed that Commissioner Stewart commented to my employer at my second job that I didn't get a raise because I work three jobs. To set the record straight, I only have two jobs and I wouldn't need a second job if my job here at the county paid enough to accommodate the cost of living. I would think the taxpayers of Fisher County wouldn't have an issue with me seeking employment elsewhere if it didn't affect the county budget and I had completed my daily tasks in my county office. Commissioner Pittman stated in the last commissioners' court having commissioners don't make as much money as others, so imagine that would justify why each of you have a business of your own that you're operating during the week. I truly believe that all the comments and actions that have inspired over the last few years is due to some that have a patriarchal mindset. And I'm hoping that this will change and that you battling with it will find peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Anybody else? Adam number one, clarification of occupational classification relating to jailers.
My understanding that we had some questions whether or not whatever raises we gave to the jailers we should give to Robin and whether she was considered a jailer or not. She, in my mind, she's a jailer. I mean, she has to have all the requirements and whatever, so I believe she should be getting whatever raise the rest of the jailers get.
Would y'all please speak up?
Let me start over?
That wouldn't hurt.
Okay.
I think y'all need to invest in a PA system so we can hear what y'all are actually saying. Is it that hard to talk loud enough that we can hear it?
We've got a PA conference.
It's my understanding that there were some questions of whether or not Robin was considered a jailer in our last, our last court. We were giving a raise to the jailers. I wanted to think, I've heard that we need to clarify that whether or not she's considered a jailer or whether we intended to give her the raise. In my mind, she is a jailer. She does all the training for jailers and she actually does jailer work when they're shorthanded, I believe. In my mind, she's a jailer and my intention is where to give her the same raises as other jailers.
But was that what the motion stated?
I don't think that's what it stated, but she's a jailer.
Is she not a magistrate or assistant? A jail administrator? Sheriff?
Because we're often shorthanded over there. She fills in as a jailer quite often.
I mean, she's more than qualified.
More than qualified. Also to look at is the fact that if she doesn't get this raise, there's no difference differential in pay between the jailer and the jail administrator. There you go.
I'd like to ask this court to reconsider all the raises.
You can't already done that step? That's in, we did that last week. We can't make a motion, vote on it, and then y'all decide, sleep on it, go, that's not the bad thing. That should be done way before, that should be done in the discussion process.
I don't think we voted on the budget yet, so.
We're coming to propose a budget. And we can't talk about the budget because it's not on today's schedule. You can adjust it on the fourteenth when we put it to bed. We can't, can't talk about the, I don't think.
Anybody else we need to address? Adam number two.
I believe she's a jailer and I'll make the motion, we include her on whatever raises we give to the rest of the jailers.
I'll second it.
You get that, okay. Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your hand, please. Three, four, one against. Martin voting against. Motion carries. All right, item number two, Mr. Stewart discussed raises for roadhands.
Well, I think what Johnny Boo and everybody else is complaining about is, has a lot of truth to it. And I think that we really need to reconsider the raises that we're, we're, we supposedly have proposed. And we were just, our intentions were to make it easier on elected officials to do their job by getting them, providing them with employees they can keep and give them a bigger raise than what they normally get. It's, it's hard for all of us, especially, especially jailers, deputies, and roadhands. We have a very hard time keeping these employees. And that was our intentions. Me personally, I don't care what I make. I'm not doing it for the money. And anybody that's elected official that's doing it for the money, I think you're in the wrong place.
Before y'all decide to vote on that, I'll give you a little information back to you. Your road formans right now, I think right at thirty-six thousand dollars, if I'm correct.
Yeah, certainly vary a little bit.
And elected officials at thirty-nine, double seven. So you're gonna get yourself into a bad situation here if you start paying road formans more than your elected. That's my comment.
Well, elected officials supposed to be doing this for a service to the community too, you know? I know some of them gotta make a living doing it, but we have an obligation to the community, our taxpayers, so. I don't have a problem with paying the employee more than I make. And it's been done in the past before also. Our chief deputy used to make more than our sheriff and we could count for here, so.
I still don't, over that. Sheriff didn't get over that.
If you look up the average salary for anybody that runs equipment, dollars, eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents. And start pay for anybody with a CDS, fifty-one thousand dollar a year. We're not even close to anything average. Pretty much every single week, every building, the wind tires out there, they, companies would stop my hand and offer my job for thirty-five dollars an hour and sixty hours a week. That's about ten thousand dollars a month.
Did they go?
Yeah, someone did. Two of them, lost, lost two of them. Yeah, I went two months, last, last, this, this last paper we got, one hand.
And that may be the case. We can't take what they're paying in the real world and come and do that.
We gotta be competitive with what people make.
Where are you gonna get the money to do it?
Where are you gonna get the money to pay for your, your raise on your hand?
It's in the budget. It's, it's done. Y'all voted on it.
I didn't.
All I'm trying to say, Kevin, is that money is in the budget and we're still on that.
I think we made some major mistakes, which everybody up here upset, seems to agree with.
Some employees are gonna get sixteen, over sixteen percent raise and we got some employees aren't ready to see none. And I think that's a huge injustice right there.
I'm not arguing with you. I'm just, my question is, where are you gonna get the money to do this? Everything that's on here today, every item with the exception of one, we've had budget hearings, we've had meetings, this stuff should have all been taken care of way before now, before the last minute.
I think we probably had more budget hearings.
We didn't have nowhere near enough meetings. We had maybe a third of what we normally had.
I don't disagree with that. But at that budget hearing, when y'all dismiss and y'all wanna leave, we can stay all day. We can open it, leave it open, and come back tomorrow.
We need to talk about it more. We're making big mistakes with what we got right now on the board. We need to come back next week or whatever we need to.
You can't, you're, you're late to the last minute. There's a timeline. We cannot do this.
I think you can change the proposal, but.
You can't. I'm not arguing that. I'm talking time. We seem to have hearings going forward between now and then because it goes in newspaper this week, right?
You would have to go in the newspaper this week.
We're at the deadline.
Well, they'd be posting this paper. It said that'd be posted for increase, but there's no increase. They don't have to be posted, so we can do away with all of the raises, can't we?
No, first thing you can't. Here's the problem you got. The increases, the only increases that have to be posted in newspaper are the elected officials.
That's correct, yes.
So any other raises we give do not have to be posted in newspaper. I'm talking about the budget. Y'all voted on our proposal, but you're right, it is not the final budget. We can handle that on the fourteenth.
The fourteenth is our.
Guess we can come back on the fourteenth and hack this out and if there's nothing else, we can do it today.
I'm not, I agree. I'm just trying to tell the way it goes.
Well, thank you for passing. I think we need to correct.
It doesn't pass, but we cannot.
We have to pass the budget.
Yes.
It's hard to pass the budget. It may take two days, but yeah.
We'd like to change it before we can pass it, I think.
I don't disagree with that.
So we can't change it out? We can change it the day of it? Is that right?
You voted on the proposal. We can be filed on the fourteenth. We can do, we just can't do budget changes today because it's not on me to do.
When I put this on the agenda, I told you exactly what I was wanting to change.
You did, and I had joy to call and ask you exactly what you wanted on there and that's what's on there.
I also said budget considerations too.
I think so.
I told you that too.
Can I speak? Um, I would just like to say, yes, elected officials are, you know, here to serve the county, but they're also here to earn a living. You know, a lot of people, you know, they do this job, you know, to pay their bills. They, that is, it's their job. And so they take their job seriously and they do their job well. And they put in the hours a week and plus and, and make sure that their job is done, you know, accurately. And so I think that that needs to be addressed. It's not just, you know, you know, people are doing this, you know, they expect to be paid for what they're worth, you know? And a lot of people have been here for a very long time. And, you know, if they left and somebody came in, they would make the same. And see, that doesn't seem right either because, you know, they, they need to be, the thing is, is people need to be valued. And we have a lot of employee, well, elected officials here in the courthouse and in Fisher County that do their job excellent and do their job well. We all make mistakes and we all do things wrong, but the thing is, is I've been, I've been coming to commissioner court for a few times now and I have watched and I see that, you know, there are, there are people here that's very knowledgeable and they're doing their job well. They work hard at it. They, they've trained for it. They're doing a good job. And we need to reward those people when you have good quality people. They need to be valued. And they need to feel valued. And I just feel like there's just a lot of strife, a lot of things going on that, that inhibits possibly even them doing their job as well as they could. And I really, I mean, I brought, I mean, I don't know if I'm even allowed to say this, but I'm going to. I brought it up to the commissioners. I really believe that we need, and the judge, we need to, we need to get back to like opening with prayer. Let's open with prayer. Let's say the pledge of allegiance is, and I know that seems like a very minimal thing, but it's not. It will set the tone. It will set, it will help keep even elected officials, people that are employees here as secretaries, jailers, whatever. It will bring us back to, you know, who, you know, it will bring us back to the right thing. It will help us to remember, you know, our country, our county, our state. And I just think that that's very important to set the tone here and that we all work together. You know, I think that that's hugely important, important. So anyways, I just wanted to share that.
Thank you for your comment. Guys, it was a pleasure. My suggestion would be that we table this. Do you want anything else?
Can we not rescind the motion that I made and redo it? Does I make the motion or do you make the add?
The reason, to be honest with you, George, I really don't know the answer to that. But what I do know, that's gonna change the budget.
Oh, I know.
And we can't talk about budget now. That's why my suggestion is we move it to the fourteenth. When we can talk about budgets, that's when we're gonna put it to bed and we can, everything's in play. We can adjust. We can do whatever.
I see what you're saying. The budget wasn't even on this today.
Yeah, I think, I think to rescind a motion, it would have to be on the agenda and the public would have to be given notice of that anyway. So, or maybe the fourteenth would be better anyway where we can do that.
I know we can table it and move it to the fourteenth.
Yes. So we need to make a motion to table this until the fourteenth?
That's my.
I'll make the motion to table this until the fourteenth.
Second. All in favor? Press it.
Yes.
All in. All right, please just have item number three, raises for the deputies.
Probably right now the race part of this is the midpoint until we meet again, I would presume. It was obvious that my deputies were left out of the raises. This was after the talk of the bad behavior and undeserving. The lady took that as a slap in the face because level chief, roadhands, the deputy didn't get a raise. That must be who you're talking about. I've got three deputies. I'm down one. The three I've got are really vague. They make good decisions. They have to make split second decisions. And if they make the wrong one, they could be in court, they could be in prison, or they could be in the grave. You've seen them on the national level right now. Some people have had a lot more training than my do. It's a decision thing. And I don't want somebody out there that can't make a decision on the spot. So I would like to keep the ones I've got. I just wanted to clarify that they're not the undeserving and the bad behavior I've got. Y'all have anything?
Maybe a little bit. Governor, Governor Abbott got some kind of deal where counties or cities will be punished if they don't, if they defund police and stuff and if we don't give, we give everybody but deputies a raise. I believe that is defunding the police.
I think if they consider such.
I figured the defund word would be a cheap shock, so I can work that out.
I think we made lots of mistakes and.
We were trying to straighten some of this out, but we ain't not being able to update the chat.
Our intentions were not to do what we did.
Problem too.
But we said a lot of things that we didn't really mean that, the way that we took, were not what we meant.
I want to go back to, everybody ought to be thankful to have a job. Right now, we're in the middle of drought, we're in the middle of pandemic. A lot of people just struggling businesses, lost a lot of their business over all this stuff the last six months. And I know the judge sat here and said the same thing, but then he voted for sixteen, over sixteen percent raise for his own secretary, so. That's a lot of good, yeah.
We only can be thankful we have a law enforcement this morning.
I agree with that.
Because that's what's keeping you safe, your families, everybody else.
I don't think we're trying, sitting up here and trying to devalue anybody.
Well, no, if you sit here and say they don't think they got a job, that's devaluing somebody.
Somebody's gotta pay the taxes too, though, I'm trying to say.
I pay my taxes and I pay everybody that's rude us too.
With your permission, I will make the motion to table this until the fourteenth comes up.
I'll second it.
A motion in a second. All in. Mr. Stewart, item number four, discuss time clocks.
We've discussed it before and I think we need to make a policy on it. We took, been talking to the tax attorneys and, and anyhow, they claim it's our responsibility to decide whether we need a time clock or not. I think it, I think it's gonna cause more problems than it's worth. It's gonna cost us a lot of money to have it too. And we need to make a policy where if any office feels like they have a problem and they need a time clock, they should have it yourself, but it shouldn't be a one-size-fits-all and everybody should have one.
I agree. I think every department is responsible for their own office.
I don't disagree with that. My question is, everything I've always been.
You didn't.
I had a problem and I got in there and I put it down, locked in, and I was all the problem myself. I didn't need any backup for it.
We don't need to fix problems that don't exist by creating new problems.
Well, I don't know who put the time clock on the agenda. It wasn't me.
I did.
Okay.
Because we've talked about it before, I think we're supposed to have a policy book, so I think it needs to be done.
The only reason I, I think that we should have a time clock is because y'all, y'all wanted all of us at the courthouse to have one, but then y'all didn't want your hands to have one. It's not fair, just let me speak. It's not fair to do one and not everybody. So you do have to do all or not. I agree with that. I agree with that. Either you're gonna do time clocks, everybody, if you're not.
The problem, the problem we had is people who were on salary that were working up here at the courthouse. And I think we fixed the problem and I don't think there is a problem other than that. I think everybody, I'm proud of everybody up here. I think we got a great bunch of people. I think the problem would be solved with just that. I don't think we need time clocks. Comes to a point where we do, we could change it then. Is something we make the motion on or not, or is it not to table it?
It says discuss. I mean, if you want it, I need a motion. I want.
Johnny's.
Excuse me. Hi, yes, ma'am.
Um, I, I would like to say a lot of, like, I have family that works for oil companies and they drive company pickups and I know a lot of people that have that. And they all, like even my husband, he's a pilot. And so, you know, pilots, you know, for his company, they have GP, you know, GPSs in their, in their plane that they can track and see exactly where they're at, see when they land, they can see, you know, exactly where they're at. And I think that if you, I mean, I think a time clock is needed for the roadhands. I do. I think that that's a good thing. And because everybody's held accountable to the same, you know? And, but also, you know, a GPS in the company, you know, in the county vehicles. Because then you can see exactly where they are, what, you know, if they're, I mean, you can pull it up and look at it. It can be, it can be a record. And I just think that that's, I think that that is needed. So there's no abuse or question or anything like that in that area as well.
Any other discussion?
I can say it's gonna be like seven thousand dollars just for the courthouse, I think, their purpose.
For the time clocks? Yeah, I think it was like one time fee of seven and so much a year. It wasn't like a tremendous amount.
I thought you were counting on GPS deals or nothing along that line, so.
The GPS is another issue, but the GPS we've, it's budgeted for. And that's something that my department can cover to put on the trucks, so.
I really, I can't really see a need in it because we know where all our guys are. We ain't got a bunch of folks out there running around. I know, I'm sure those commissioners like me, they know where the roadhand are every day, as far as that goes, what jobs they're working on and what roads they're working on, if they're working at the barn. And heck of a. I'll stay in touch with my guys pretty good. I don't have no, I don't have no question on where they, where they tell me they are. Because I'm, every time I went and checked, they've been there. Done, been there and done it and gone, you know, done, done, done what I asked for, so. A lot of people will see our hand at home one day and they'll think it's something, you know, that they're not supposed, they're not supposed to be at home doing something they're not supposed to be doing. And we go and fight fires on the weekends and after hours. Like Sunday, we went, got a trainer from the fire department. And so there's sometimes they're not at work. And it looks funny to people outside. But it's a mode of stuff like on Friday or Saturday or something, back when we had moisture once in a while. You know, we'll see a greater two or three out there running around because you actually got something you can. It's a doggone drive right now. It'd be like trying to, like, paint.
You have bridges that flood off, the cave in with dry weather up there. We have center guy looking on Sunday to do it. We're gonna have to pay them time after all those things, you know, if we're putting on a time clock. It's gonna cost us more, it's gonna save us.
Yeah, I see no benefit in that.
Y'all been turning in overtime for some of that firework just up by. That has been, been running through payroll, some of that overtime.
I don't see the benefits in time clocks outweighing the expenses and the problems. And I make the motion that we leave it up to each individual office to decide if they need a time, put a time clock or not. Not have a county-wide policy to have time clocks.
Have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
All in. Yes.
Yes.
You know. All right, item number five, discuss senior center hourly versus hourly. All right, item number five, discuss senior center hourly salary, Mr. Stewart, you again.
Uh, that's another thing that was questioned and whether, how, how to pay a media for. Not be, use a four time salary, is that right?
Let me explain.
I don't think most of us understand this problem.
Let me explain how it's been.
Yeah.
She is over the senior system, she has three, four employees under her. In the past, it has always been salary position. So, I mean, when I came, so I'm assuming it's been that way forever. It's twenty-one thousand nine hundred dollars, I think, is what she makes. So, under the assumption that she has always been salary, there's always enough. One thing I would like to comment on, when she became out of that, she said, I do not need insurance. My husband has insurance, so she hasn't paid for it yet, but she's been there five years, so she's gave back to the county roughly fifty thousand dollars. And unless, you know something that I don't know, I don't think this thing's broke?
That's, that's exactly what I'm saying.
So I don't know why it's even on.
Because of that, that's what people were saying, we, we made the motion or whatever to, and proved it that we were gonna do away with, with unelected, uh, salary positions. And I think that we need to leave them on.
Okay, because that, if we get into that.
I don't think we need to broke, fix what's not broken yet.
Okay, so no action to be taken?
Well, I just think we need to clarify that, because we did say that we were gonna do away with all salary positions that were an elected official, I think we need to keep that one.
So, just to be clear, let's make a motion to leave it.
I made the motion that we leave, uh, her salary.
Her position and the salary.
Her, her position and salary, yes.
As it is.
As it is.
Yes, senior superintendent.
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor? Okay, the last item on the agenda today is item number six, it says discuss and take action on new policy and policy changes. That was put on there verbatim, and there's not enough information on there to take action on that at all. It needs to be more specific, you gotta put the public on notice just like you're doing. This could be any policy, their policy, and it's not specific enough, Michael, can you address that?
Sure, I, I think instead of the judge, it's, uh, uh, the public, the public is entitled to know what's being considered here with three days' notice. Uh, that really could be anything and everything, I think there's pursuant to the Public Meetings Act. End case law interpreting that, that's kind of unconstitutionally vague and doesn't put the public on notice, because it could really be anything. I'm sorry, I don't mean that as a personal attack, trust me, I even tried to call you Monday to, to let you message saying.
So I guess you need to put on the ground all policies in, or?
You would need to state the specific policies to be addressed.
Well, it's like more than one, multiple policies.
You would need multiple agenda items to do that, so the public knows exactly what policies are being considered.
All right, we'll table that and go now. Table it, we need, it needs to come back as a new, more specific, you can't table what's on there because of what I've got. Anything else? If not, I will entertain a motion to do that.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A motion in a second, in a second. Thank y'all's comments.
And thanks all for chatting with us around, so we can hear, very good, we appreciate it.
Yeah, complimenting the part on that policy.
What?
That was the county's part.
Oh, that was, thank you. Well, I didn't tell some joke.
Okay, so I gotta ask, why did y'all vote against it?
You can ask, but we're gonna, we don't, we don't, you can ask.
Okay, Mr. Stewart. Why did you, why did you bring to the agenda, uh, a topic to vote against, that you yourself actually only brought to the court to discuss in the first place? Time clocks, you're the one who brought time clocks up.
This is just a.
That was your introduction, nobody talked about it, and you introduced it, you introduced it, everybody jumped on the horn, was very excited at the end of the meeting. That was three weeks ago. Today you voted against it, saying that it's just the county hands that don't get it, why is that? It's only the county hands that are going to, I mean, y'all, you guys said, we did not, no, y'all said, you didn't think the county hands needed time clock. But y'all were the ones who. And my problem, I have to. A problem, a problem that you thought was important enough to introduce time clocks, that was hearing it, and today you voted against it. Why is that, why this way? It was you, it wasn't even part of the discussion, when y'all were talking about salaries, you introduced it. Yeah, but it was, but it was you who brought it, brought it up. You thought it was a good idea at the time, and now you don't. That, yeah. But it was, but it was you who started that discussion, is what I'm saying. You may, they have, people have hours. So, what's, just tell us to vote in the new elected official. Time clocks don't have anything to do with that, that's, that's, that's a fact. I, I know, that's what I'm saying, is you, you, you just voted against, you just voted against something that you were in favor of.
I was in favor of it.
Yes, you did, actually, I have it on the record, video to prove how much you guys were in favor of it, just three weeks ago. I'm pretty sure that it wasn't, but I'll be happy to have it all of that video together in the long show, everyone.
Then you find out that they worked all night, you know, they're taking time off.
You, you thought you were the only one? It's always a new day. Well, it was, uh.
About what?
About the election and, and.
I don't know, man, you can't be the only one out there who's watching this meeting who had that same question.
I, I'm the problem, man.
No comment. Assumption, I would say. Always a new day.
But you're not supposed to send them out too early, because then people forget if you.
That's right, I told him, I said, which way you got an election in November? I mean, we're not, we're not talking about.
Oh, that's hilarious, because he didn't tell me last time, he called me today.
Well, I don't know.
I'm not supposed to, I'm not supposed to send them.
Said, I don't know if, if she's decided that Ben and Rob are not, or wants to have a.
We called him, we told him, we're getting new equipment, we just, we called everybody, we said, we're getting new equipment, do you want to sell it? Because we're gonna have to have it, because we're gonna be. And he told Chad, well, I don't know if I'm gonna wanna do it in the hot.
Well, he needs to decide.
No, well, I, but the, but the statute says I'm not supposed to send the.
But he's already, he's already talked to Peggy about working it, so if he's not, no, if he's working it. I figured that would make your.
He didn't tell me last time, too, he was gonna talk about.
You should, you should spend from seven to seven. And then he comes over here and he's standing right there, I finally got. Yeah, he would come and pick up stuff, I mean, like, stuff that we were using all the time, I needed the folder for the, the.
Oh, do you want to see the new one?
Yes, yes, hold on, let me throw this in my bag and I'll come back and.
I will help you take it.
Uh, Mathis?
Yeah.
How do you feel about the outcome of that meeting?